We'll go ahead and call the meeting to order for the Angola Council Monday, April 21st. We have a roll call, please.
Councilmember Coffee?
Present.
Councilmember Olson?
Here.
Councilmember Sharkey?
Here.
Work. Councilmember Dow?
Here.
Councilmember McDermott?
Here.
We have Public Service Recognition Week coming up. It's going to be May 4th through the 10th. We have a proclamation we'd like to read, or I would like to read. In honor of the city, Angola city employees, whereas residents are served every single day by our employees. These unsung heroes do the work that keep our city working. Their tireless efforts are often unseen and whereas public employees take not only jobs but oaths, many risks are lives each day in the service to the people of our cities. Stuben County and hundreds of thousands that visit our community every year and make a difference each and every day without recognition. And whereas day in and day out, they provide a diverse service demanded by residents with efficiency and integrity. And whereas without these public servants at every level, continuity would be impossible in a democracy that regularly changes its leaders and elected officials. Now, therefore, I, David B. Martin, Mayor of Angola, do hereby proclaim May 4th through the 10th, 2025, as Public Service Recognition Week in the city of Angola, Indiana. Encourage all citizens to thank our city employees for the work they do. In witness thereof, I accept my hand and cause the seal of the office of the mayor of City of Angola, Indiana, to be a fix this 21st day of April, 2025. And in honor of Public Service Recognition Week, we will be serving lunch to all of our employees. We're going to be doing it at Commons Hall on May 7th. And I would invite the council members to attend that lunch from 11:00 to 1:00, Commons Hall, May 7th. If you can be there, I know our employees would appreciate your presence.
Opposed, tied again?
11:00 to 1:00. And with that, let's move on to request approval of the May 7th minutes.
April 7th.
April, sorry, April 7th. Thank you, Rita.
Second.
Motion second, any discussion?
Mr. Selman's name spelled incorrectly in here somewhere. It's T.O. instead of Tom. Spell that. Looking for it, but I haven't found it.
That bill I want to find?
That's the only one I found. I'm sorry I couldn't find more, but it's two Selman instead of Tom Selman.
We have a motion of second with corrections. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed?
Aye.
Any other unfinished business? New business ordinance, 1773, 2025, in order amending the zoning map of the city of Angola, Indiana, west of South Golden Lake Road. First reading.
Request approval. Second.
Motion second, any discussion? Hearing none, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed? Ordinance number 1774, 2025, in order amending the Angola Municipal Code, Title 13, Public Services, Chapter 13.15, Stormwater Management, for first reading. We'll get through.
Second.
Motion second, any discussion? Hearing none, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed? Ordinance number 1775, 2025, additional appropriation ordinance for the city of Angola, Indiana, redevelopment general fund for the first reading. We'll get through.
Second.
Motion second, any discussion? Amanda, you want to, or excuse me, Rita, you want to post on what we're doing here? This is kind of briefly lower.
So this is just for us to spend some of that redevelopment money. It doesn't necessarily need council approval, but for us to appropriate those funds, we need to run it through. It will be for legal fees, legal descriptions of all the parcels that will be included in the extended tip district, the work that has to be done with that, with the right of ways. So it is just all part of that whole process. We probably won't spend all of that money, I hope, but we just want it there in case.
And previously announced, we're going to be expanding our tip district, and this is to cover the administrative legal expenses to do so. Any other discussion?
Thank you for that.
Hearing none, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed?
Aye.
Review and determine if West Common LLC located at 115 and 125 North McKinney and 1210 West Mommy is or is not in substantial compliance with a statement of benefits for real estate improvements, Resolution Number 2022-831. Without looking up, I know Isaac is, there he is.
Thank you, Mayor. Thank you, Council. Always a pleasure. I would like to say these are my last three, but they are not. I have one company left. And I'll bring that to you next council meeting, May 15th deadline. West Commons, though, is a project. It's pretty easy to do. Again, real estate, it's easy to see that the project goes up. It's easy to see that the cost is there. They've reported on that. One thing I'll make note of is they did commit to five employees. They have the duration, like I talked about it during the last session of the abatement, to actually meet and comply. But I really want you to pay attention to the salaries of those two positions. They're well above what they projected on the SB1s. Tyler and his team could not be here tonight. They did send me an email with some additional explanation. I'll be glad to share that with Council. But they were apologetic. They would ask that if you wanted them to, they could come at a next meeting or sometime in the near future at an additional meeting. But for everything concerned on this one, the only update I'll have is I've asked Rita to change at the top. It should be tax year '25, payable '26. It currently says '24, '25. She could change that with her initials. Tyler's okay with that from West Commons. And then that can be submitted. That is my recommendation. They are in compliance.
Move we find West Commons LLC in substantial compliance with the statement of benefits.
With the changes made?
Yes, sir. Second.
Motion second, any discussion? Hearing none, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed? Review and determine if Enterprise Point LP located at 907 South Wayne Street is or is not in substantial compliance with a statement of benefits for real estate improvements, Resolution 2018-735. That was over 10 years.
This is another one. You saw Danelle Beaverstein last month, or last council meeting, I should say. They could not make it tonight due to the conflict. Very similar, real estate, you see it. They're well within their means in terms of what they projected and in terms of the cost. Also, they have met the number of employees, but they've also exceeded their salaries, which we truly benefit and appreciate from. So with that, it is my recommendation that they are in compliance.
Um, we find Enterprise LP substantial compliance with a statement of benefits for real estate improvements. Second.
Motion second, any discussion? All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed? Review and determine if RR Donnelley Incorporated located at 611 West Mill Street is or is not in compliance with statement of benefits for personal property, Resolution 2018-725, for 10 years.
Thank you, Mayor. This one is actually, I've got a colleague with me tonight, Bert Leach from RR Donnelley. So again, as I've always told you, ask him the hard questions. He's the one who can legally answer those. But with this one, very unique company, very specialized in some of their skill sets. It's one we've been watching, matter of fact, over the last nine years, especially through COVID, when some of the skill sets are very specialized, very hard to find. Uniquely enough, this company, they reported on the SB1, 180 employees, excuse me, back in 2018, right before COVID. Took a hit during COVID, and then this year, reported 165. I'll let Bert speak to the amount of turnover. Again, what I want you to pay attention to, yes, they are a little bit below what they have actually reported. They did hire the three employees specific to this SB1 statement. But what's the number difference you'll see is in the retention side. Also, pay attention to the payroll amount. Again, very positive to see at a lower threshold of total employees, our payroll is higher. So if you have any questions for Bert, please ask him. He's the one who can legally answer them.
Bert, if you'd like to add to the?
Thank you, Council and Mayor. Appreciate the opportunity to speak with you and also appreciate the opportunity to be able to enjoy the benefit of this, of this tax abatement and support of our operation. And as Isaac said, we have an eye for growth. And we've enjoyed the ability to attract new clients to our business. And with those folks that we've got working for us, the skills that they leverage and the customer service dedication that they show serve those clients and by extension, can be good representatives of the community. So again, appreciate all the support that the city of Angola has provided to us. We look forward to being able to continue to deliver on that partnership. Thank you.
Do you need a motion?
That we find RR Donnelley in substantial compliance. Second.
Motion second, any discussion? Hearing none, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed? Bert, we certainly appreciate RR Donnelley. I've always been amazed watching this company for many, many years, how you adapt to the changing market conditions and the changing technology and keep your business active, relevant, and a competitive powerhouse. And we love to have you in our community, and we thank you for being one of our industrial partners. I was, thank you. Grateful.
Mr. Mayor, can I ask a question?
Sure.
On Senate Bill 1?
Yes.
You sent us some information about that. Is that going to, is that going to affect our ongoing tax abatements?
Ongoing, it will have minimal impact. Future tax abatements, it could have a huge impact. One of the few tools we have locally is the ability to take a look at abating personal property tax on the business side. That's helped incentivize projects to expand here, stay here, employ more people here. The lion's share of the tax abatements I've done within the city of Angola, I've talked to Mayor about this, personal property side. It does have a huge impact. In an environment today where very few, if any, of our businesses have asked for this type of relief at the state level, I find it fascinating that it's gotten that far. Indiana is a very competitive state from a tax environment.
Anything under a million dollars of personal property, business personal property, will be exempt. If they have more than a million dollars, then it's all taxable. If they're less than a million, next year, no, it's following year. It steps up.
Following year and then a step.
Yeah. But very seldom do we have anybody in our community that gets over $2 million.
You're making a huge capital investment if you're over $2 million.
We expect.
Yeah.
Expect.
Thank you, Council. Thanks, Council meeting. Ryan put me on the agenda, Russell.
All right, request approval of the sales contract with Clear Height Construction LLC for installation of a breakspan Atlas Salt Storage Building in the amount of $379,366.00. Mr. Ritter, would you like to tell us what we're?
It's roughly an 80 by 80 clear span building, 34 feet, I think, to the peak, so you can dump semis into it. It can handle almost 2,000 ton of salt. So we usually use 1,000 ton of salt a year, so fighting for growth on storing more salt and have a sand salt mixture. This is everything except for the floor. The floor is going to be an asphalt floor. We're going to have to do that in the grade. The ground is pretty unstable, so we have to pour columns in.
Chad, is this down at the?
No.
Not at the plant?
Right at, just on the east side of our north building.
Okay.
It'll encroach in the parking lot just a little bit, but.
You aren't looking where we talked about before and?
Yeah, this is, this is a better spot to keep it, so everything's right up next to it.
Have to demolish those other salt pillars?
No, we're going to use them for storage for equipment.
Okay.
Move we approve this contract? Second.
Motion second, any discussion? Hearing none, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed? Request approval of client service agreement with the utility association for the Rocket In-Car Video Services in the amount of $219,200 over the next five years. Chief, would you like to give a brief synopsis of what we're doing there?
Yes. Council, late 2023, we had placed an order for 10 video cameras from a competitor, a competitor that we had used for 15 years with no issues. Little did we know that that competitor of this company is having financial issues. We started noticing that when we didn't receive our product for almost one year from the time that we ordered it. Once the items came in, they sat at our department for another four months. When they started putting them in, we had massive damage to some of our vehicles to the point of not running. We had doors not able to be locked. We had windows not able to be taken down. We had emergency equipment that would not function. They were contacted. Our attorney was nice enough to write them a very pleasant letter in telling them that we were going to get out of said contract that we had agreed upon for five years and that we would be taking the equipment out ourselves and sending it back to them. We did not want any of their people to touch our equipment again in fear that things were going to get worse. So our assistant, Darren Taylor, went to work trying to find another company, and we found Utility. Utility is a younger company. Their roots span basically software. So they were the company that made all the software for all of the video systems that are out and about right now. They thought, why are we giving our information away when we could make money off of it? So they have a software program that is extremely easy to use, and we are excited to try them. The prior company, Digital Ally, was for 10 cameras. This is for 20 cameras in car along with a system that will hopefully work just as well with our IT, if not better than what we were used to. So that is why I am in front of you, or that's why this is in front of you tonight, is this is going to be a significant change, going from 10 cameras to our entire fleet, basically, minus my truck and the pool vehicles will have operating cameras within them.
Is there a? Question. Upset. Have they responded as directed the previous company? Accepted everything back? I mean?
They have. We actually got that all sent out to them a week and a half ago, and everything is back in their possession now.
We owe them nothing more.
We are not paying them anything more. Zero. So.
Were you able to trial this before going with the 20?
We actually, our assistant, Darren Taylor, went ahead and contacted, I believe, at least five, if not six, different lease departments that either have a few on hand or they have, you know, what we are looking at, 50-plus cameras. And the result of that is why I'm in front of you. Most of the officers on the road, not command, because we aren't the ones that you need to ask. You need to talk to those people who are using it day in and day out. And there was a good response from the staff who use them on a regular basis.
Good. Does it, does it keep the film of a video of the?
With this system, it's, so it's called a splicing is how they do it. Every 10 seconds, the video is uploaded to the cloud. So as a supervisor or whomever, I can get online and start watching immediately upon every 10 seconds the video is updated. So.
And how long does it stay up there till we, do you have a policy that we get rid of it every six months?
We are currently working on that. In the past, we have been at six months, depending on the video and depending on what the case exists. If it's a current and active case, we will store it and definitely.
And you can, you can determine that yourself.
Correct.
Okay. This is all automatic operation?
As.
So if the red lights come on, the camera comes on, it's not constant, though, is it?
Yes and no.
Okay.
So when you flip the lights on on most cameras, including this one, flip the lights on to the max spot, the video system will then backtrack up to two minutes from activation.
Okay.
So you flip the lights on, you have up to two minutes of prior activity and then everything else until you shut the system down.
I was reading something, if somebody removes a gun or those kind of activations are there, is that what I'm understanding?
From the removal of the gun from the holster, that usually is the body cam activation.
Okay.
So with this car, it can be set for the door opening to the siren being turned on to a multitude of different things. But yes, it can be extremely automatic or just the tap of the camera itself.
So it's pretty all-inclusive. That's what I was curious about.
Correct.
Yeah. I noticed if you, if the system has any failure, they call it fatal, severe, medium, or minor. Is this a better situation than you had with the other one?
The other one never even. Never even had something like that in their literature. And having 24/7 operational support is something that we weren't used to in anything that we currently have.
Sounds like the business models. Sounds like they're tough to lie.
And this price is comparable, I'm assuming?
It is comparable. Their one spot is, the total cost is $219,000 divided into that five years. So our initial cost would be $25,000. Following next year, January 1st, a cost of $62,680. And then our contract date would be when we would sign it this year. And I believe our signature or their acceptance date is going to be May 1st. So then we would owe them another payment of $43,840.
This is, this is similar to what we were paying this other, were to pay the other company?
What was that?
This is similar to what we were going to pay the other company.
Correct.
Chief, you don't anticipate this, but I don't guess that if we have, since this new company with us, if we have a problem with this company, is there an out clause also? Are we, how do we?
This company.
I know what you mean, anticipate, but that's why I asked.
Very forthcoming and very easy to work with. They had specific locations where if we had issues, we would have to supposedly go to Georgia, because that's where the company is out of. When that was brought up to the sales staff and the business manager, he said, you can mark it out, and we will be in agreement that if you have any issues, we will come to Stuben County for our area. So they don't really seem to be trying to hold us down other than any other normal contract.
We have a lapse in service right now.
Yes, we've had a lapse in service for about well over a year.
Oh, that's not good.
Yeah.
How soon will these guys be online?
They said if we sign May 1st, we would be looking early June. And that is bringing their staff onsite and working for, they think about a week in order to get all the cars with their staff at our facility.
Nice.
You're good?
I'm good.
I'm going to make approval of this agreement with utilities associates.
I'll second that.
Motion second, any discussion? All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed? Request approval of Jeff Martin to the Board of Zoning Appeals to fill a vacant position. His term would end on January 2029. In full disclosure, yes, Mr. Martin is my brother. He had a position on the plan commission for a long time. He was the chair of the plan commission for a long time. When I became mayor, he and I both felt it was not appropriate for him to have a mayoral position to the plan commission. But Rita has recruited him to serve on the BZA because of his experience, but only as a appointment from the council, so he would answer to the council for the appointment, not the mayor.
I worked with Jeff on the plan commission. Jeff is a professional in this. I, I proved Jeff Martin, BZ. I'm assuming it's difficult to get people to serve on that regardless, isn't it?
Well, I think the advantage to Jeff is, is he has experience, and we have a fairly new BZA. It doesn't have a lot of trend, and I think that's why Rita was, I'm putting words in your mouth, but why don't you speak for yourself?
Actually, those are accurate words. That, he is correct. I had asked Jeff, just knowing that I had a very fairly new board. We're losing Mr. Moore after like 25 years, I think, of service on the BZA. And so having that vacancy, I just felt like another seasoned member would be perceptive for it. So that's why I asked him. Yes.
I approve it. We approve Mr. Martin.
We have a split motion second. Let's see if we can say. Okay, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed? Request approval of City of Angola side grant agreement with Masonic Lodge for property located at 35 South Public Square in the amount of $8,382, not to exceed $10,000. And I assume Mr. Moore, you're here to speak for the lodge tonight?
I am. I, we're replacing the side door on 20. It's the original 100-plus-year-old wood door that's in very rough shape. We've saw a huge savings from the windows and doors that we put on the front, and this will help on the side. It's also will help with the plaster on the inside, because regulating the heat and the cooling on the inside will help with that. Without this grant, we couldn't afford to do it. It's a full custom door because of the arch and everything that's there that runs about $17,000. Waglers will be putting that in. So as soon as we get approval, they'll get going on it.
We will note that you're seeing that increase in the fee, because we increased the amount of the facade grants this year from $5,000 to $10,000.
Okay.
So hence the not exceeding 10 and has asked for the $8,000.
Okay. Otherwise, we could have never done it. So thank you.
I assume this is all approved by the historical people?
Yes. He appeared Wednesday at the historic preservation meeting and was approved for the certificate of appropriateness to replace the door and get that taken care of. So getting him directly on this, Wagler said they can move as soon as they get that approval. So he will then just submit receipts once that's paid for and we'll move through.
I think as Masonic Lodge being, you know, a pivotal place in our community. I mean, it's, it's there and it's beautiful, and we need to keep it beautiful.
Motion?
This is a motion. I move to approve. Second.
Motion second, any discussion? All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? And while we're at it, Mr. Moore, thank you for your many years of service on the BZA. The volunteer boards are sometimes very difficult to fill. It's a thankless job. I've been on the BZA before. It's always been a challenge. And I appreciate your service. 24 years, 25 years?
It was like Mayor Selman's last year. So yeah, right.
Oh, my.
Before 25.
Yeah. Well, thank you.
And he's also served on plan commission and BZA for like the last 10 years. I don't know, five, three, five years, I would say more, but yes, so.
We very much appreciate your services. Thank you. Thank you very much. Clerk Treasor, Depository Statement and Cash Reprisament for the month ending March 2025 is presented for your information reports. Clerk Treasor.
Of the minute.
Kim?
I have no report, Mr. Mayor.
Rita?
The only thing I wanted to mention regarding redevelopment, as well as with the vacancy that was on the board from Chuck Dow, we have replaced his position with retired city engineer Bill Boyer. He has accepted that appointment to be on the redevelopment commission, so we're excited about that. We also, part of that appropriation that you guys approved tonight is for the legal fees. And the redevelopment attorney has been hired, and it's been, it was, it is Barnes and Thornburg, who actually wrote the redevelopment handbook as an example. So we're very excited to have them on board with our legal team and attorney shop to just kind of get us through some of this process. So I wanted to let you guys know. That's two things.
Mr. Marple, IT, anything to share with us this evening?
No, sir.
Mr. Ritter, anything from the street department?
No, sir.
Mrs. Cope, anything to share with us? Chief, anything?
No, sir.
And the last but not least, we celebrated the 45th anniversary of Mr. Selman working for us the other day. And he'll be retiring before the next council meeting. So this is his last council meeting that he will be able to share with us. We appreciate his 40 years, and Mr. Selman, the floor is yours. You'd like to?
That's been a good run. I don't really want to say, you know, three, three different mayors, multiple different council members, board members. It has been positive the whole, whole way through, right? I'm sure some of the things I. It has been positive all the whole, whole way through. I know. I'm sure some of the things I came up with, if I thought I was nuts, but and I've enjoyed, I've enjoyed that. Yeah. I don't know what to, to really say. A lot of people change jobs because they're not happy with either the, the job itself, the people they're around and, and I never felt that. So, you know, it's maybe not a get rich career. It's not a, but it is a career. It's a, a, a tight knit group of people. I think it's very important jobs we all, we all have. You know, of course, I think mine is the most important. But in all reality, it's been a great living for myself, my family, uh, my father before me. And it's, it's a great community. And I'm not going anywhere. So, you know, I'm not dying or anything. So I appreciate it.
So I'm going to recruit him to serve on the board.
Yeah, this don't, and, and we may do that. And, and Mr. Selman out of 40 years.
Let's play in the woods, won't we?
But we, we thank you. The citizens thank you. You've always done a very headlong job for us. You've always worked extremely hard and you've always delivered the best quality water of anybody I could ever, I, I love, I love the winter time only because I can get up in the middle of the night and go get a drink right out of the faucet. It's nice and cold and clear and fresh, tastes great. And you're the one that makes it that way. So we appreciate your service. Anybody else want to add comments? Uh, request approval of allowance of accounts payable voucher 73,809 through 74,027 totaling 609, 639,350 and 27 cents, which includes gender fund transfers of 107,967 and 89 cents.
I move that we approve the allowance of accounts payable vouchers.
Motion. Second, second, any discussion? Hearing none, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Is there any other new business?
Mr. Mayor, uh, this last week, uh, Councilman German and I were out scouting for golf balls on Lake James when they had the, the big fire out there and I was duly impressed.
Were you around the course?
Yeah. I was looking for golf balls with kitty walks. But I was impressed with the, the response from the this farm and they go fire department. And even the mayor was out there. Yeah. So.
Our fire department was on a full arrest call at the KOH camp round out by the airport. And then they got a call from somebody about a brush fire. Of course, PD goes right out there. Our PD officer is giving reports back and is moving up on a house. We're trying to get different departments to respond, trying to get anybody to respond because our guys are doing CPR out here at the KOH. Uh, before we got all done, every, but every department, I think in the county was there helping put out the fire. It did reach one house. It did some minor damage on one of the houses, but they did contain it and they contained it very quickly. And we had a lot of tankers to.
It was amazing how much smoke that was there.
Yeah, yeah. Somebody started a, uh, leaf pile and the next thing you know, the house two doors up was on fire. So they did get it out. Yes. But thank you for calling other fire department. Anything else? Hearing none, the next council meeting will be Monday, May 5th. Thank you all.
Thank you. Thank you, guys.
Hi, Ben.
Thanks for joining.
I know. You have to remind me. You better remind me.
Yeah, how you doing?
Yeah, I watched it when I was on vacation.